Good evening, welcome to the August 22 meeting of the town of Newmarket Town Council. Prior to the meeting, I'd like to mention that Counselor Amy Burns is calling in, she's on the speakerphone here, and I'd like to ask her at this time if anyone is in the room with her and if it was impractical for her to attend.
Nobody is in the room with me and it was impractical for me to attend because I am traveling to work and I'm in Bloomington, Indiana right now.
Sounds lovely, thank you. If there is no objection from any of the other councilors, then Counselor Burns can participate. And seeing no objections, we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the Constitution, to our God, to the principle of liberty and justice for all.
So, yeah, that was a little different. Okay, and we have two sessions for public input tonight. First is a public forum, which is on topics that are not, for one thing, they're not the issue of the public hearing, which will be second, is about the repeal of ordinance, Chapter 33, parentheses 5, one-way traffic on Church Street, that petition. So we begin with the public forum. Again, this is not the part on Church Street. Does anybody here have input on another topic?
Hi, I'm Stacy Mazur and I live at 5 Church Street. I just wanted to mention that the new interface for the government documents that you guys post online for agendas and minutes, it's a little clunky and I'm finding it to be difficult to navigate, so I imagine that anybody that might have computer problems maybe would find it even more difficult, so just something to think about moving forward, getting the widget larger so that it fills the screen properly and making sure that you're not navigating through so many screens to get basically what used to be the town packet. Thank you.
Was that the novice agenda?
Hi, I'm Sarah Lowe, I live at 3 Church Street, and it was brought to my attention that the town website, the section where we send information to you on the town website, is being rerouted to old council members. Johnny, huh? That's fixed? Okay, Johnny told me about it, but he didn't tell me it had been fixed, so I just wanted to mention.
Okay. Seeing no other input on the public forum, we now begin the public hearing on repeal of ordinance, Chapter 30-3, parentheses 5, one-way traffic Church Street, which was a petition submission. And again, I'll just remind that this is pursuant to the town charter, that the town council must hold a public hearing in this situation. Rules are each person will be allowed to speak once for five minutes. The town administrator will keep time. Public hearing is an opportunity for people to explain why they believe the town council was incorrect in passing the ordinance. Following the public hearing, the council may, one, pass said measure without alteration or amendment, or with amendment, we could pass it with an amendment, okay, and/or two, deny said measure with stated reasons. So with that, we open public hearing.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to give a one-minute warning?
Sure, go ahead. As you will. Yeah, go ahead, anybody that has something.
I'm Sarah Lowe, 3 Church Street, and I got my email out to you late today, so I just thought I'd bring you a copy because the print was kind of small, I realized when I tried to print it, so. Dear councilors, here I am again to beg you to reconsider the dangerous change to the traffic flow on Church Street. The street has made way too many blind driveways in a very short run. The grade makes it dangerous for pedestrians with runoff debris in summer and snow and black ice in winter. When I was in Black Earth, Wisconsin, the driveway is badly flooded at this moment. Last week, I noticed traffic signs on both ends of a crosswalk going from a shoe shop to their discount warehouse. And the idea was you would pick up a traffic flag and then proceed into the crosswalk, and they even suggested that after you crossed, that you indicate your thanks to the person who had stopped for you, put the flag in the basket on the other side, and then come back. And I thought that maybe an attractive container at the foot of Church Street and at the stone church stairs would make pedestrians feel more visible. I suggest bandanas in the light of the stone church's humble beginnings. No flashers, please, because we're trying to sleep there, some of us, as well. If you decide to make the traffic flow move in an easterly direction again, I suggest a stop sign at the corner. Drivers would stop and then inch out and look down before they leap. Speed limit 15 miles per hour? I don't know, that might be extreme, but to get into my driveway, I know I probably have to go that slowly because I have a right angle turn and back up a hill into the driveway. So I've never clocked myself, but that would be for you to decide. Could we get the Rock Street sign back again so parents and visitors know where to go to find their friends and family? That seems to have disappeared along with the do not enter signs. Thank you for your kind reconsideration of this ordinance. I will steal the slogan from a different department. I urge you, as our elected representatives, to protect and serve, consider the safety of residents and visitors. Thank you for your service, respectfully, Sarah E. Lowe, 3 Church Street.
Hi, my name is Stacy Mazur and I live at 5 Church Street. I'd like to thank the 140 citizens who signed our petition requesting the public hearing to repeal the recent ordinance change to Church Street. It is through their voice that we can be here today. For over a month, our small group of neighbors worked together to get the necessary signatures to come before you. We did not have the same luxury of simply emailing the town administrator and asking for our request to be put before the proper committee. I'm hopeful that despite the town administrator standing by his recommendation, the town council will see reason and hear the voices of the members of our community who have stated they do not agree with the new ordinance. The original petitioner did not offer overwhelming evidence that the change to Church Street would bring a positive impact to the safety of our neighborhood, nor did the Highway Safety Committee minutes from their May meeting provide any facts that guided their decision-making. So we'll go off what's discussed in the June meeting. It was stated that the fiscal impact would be minimal. However, Church Street does not meet the minimum requirements for a two-way road, and to meet those requirements would incur a larger fiscal impact than presented. This would include buying right-of-way from 5 Chapel, moving utility poles, and doing new paving. The corner of Church Street is not physically large enough to actually put in two lanes and would require excavation below the stone church. So what are we going to do? Will the town be widening the road, but we don't have the necessary right-of-way to do so, so what's supposed to happen? The fiscal impact presented was the cost of a couple signs, but to enact the traffic change properly, we require a higher cost, if it is even feasible to do so. I'd like to also remind the council of the confusion during the June meeting about the proposed traffic pattern. It was obvious that it was not well-understood by the members of the public, the council, or even the petitioner. We've done a little bit of very loose traffic tracking since the change has happened, and what we have found so far is that 15 cars have gone down the wrong way, and at least one delivery truck has went up Church Street despite supposedly delivery trucks knowing that that road is going to be too narrow for them and another car to be on. While we discuss the direction of Church Street, I feel it's important to point out Newmarket subdivision regulations that states establishing the layout of roads and property boundaries has an important impact on the character and function of that community. Roads can detract from the neighborhood, or they can enhance it. Per Chapter 3.02, Roads of Newmarket Title III, Land Use Codes and Regulations, Chapter 5, roads shall be constructed to standards suitable for the climate, the environment in which they are built, and for their proposed use. The resulting road should require a minimal amount of maintenance for quite many years, which is an odd way of saying that. The grade of the road shall not be less than 1%, nor greater than 8%. The maximum grade of a road approaching an intersection should be 3% within 50 feet of the intersection. All roads shall be paved, and the minimum width of pavement per travel lane should be 12 feet. While I'm aware that these regulations pertain to lot consolidations or subdivision of properties, it does speak to the harmonious development and redevelopment of our town. I see these strictures as guidelines to be applied to changing or altering the current traffic patterns on any road, and the town should apply these same rules to the downtown area. I don't understand why these weren't taken into consideration when this change was proposed. The code also states the final product should permit comfortable and safe pedestrian and bicycle movements, as well as motorized vehicle movements, and shall protect vulnerable users such as children, the disabled, and the elderly, all of which live near Church Street. Church Street exceeds the maximum 8% grade. At around 17 5th feet in width, it does not accommodate for two travel lanes of 12 feet each. In fact, much of Church Street does not meet the regulations stipulated in town code. Changing the traffic direction increases the probability of pedestrian, bike, and vehicular encounters. It does not consider the condition of the road in winter and how that will impact drivability. It is a fact that my front-wheel-drive vehicle will not be able to get up that icy or snowy road. I will not be able to get into my driveway as driving on Grant Street will be illegal for me to do, unless the Chief of Police wants to guarantee that I won't get a citation, I don't see how I'm supposed to get home on a bad day. Nothing to say about my insurance if I get in an accident. I also don't feel comfortable following the advice of Mike Hoffman and just do what I need to do and drive however I need to because I'm a local. How many other town residents might find themselves in the same situation? And I'm actually going to let Gretchen take over for me.
I'll finish. How's the timer?
Gretchen, did you start?
Oh, wow, you're on it, okay. I am Gretchen Tatalis, I'm of 5 Church Street, Apartment 3, right here. Okay, so I did read Stacy's letter, I agree with everything that she's done in terms of gathering some of these facts, that I just, I'm not much of a researcher myself, but I stand by everything she's said so far, and so I'm going to continue. The stated reasons for changing the direction of Church Street are insufficient. Everything Mike Hoffman stated did not really talk about improving the place. Anyway, sorry, I'll stick to the script. And do not warrant the alterations. It benefits one business owner and does little for residents. Please reconsider your vote and correct this mistake before more are made to support it. Please listen to the 140 petitioners who signed our petition and those who are here today. The best thing maybe you could try to do first is to fix our sidewalk if you'd really like to help, because I think that was one of the actual concerns raised to, in favor of changing the measure, was for the citizens, the residents who were walking, and I just don't think that changing the road pattern will help. I think really the sidewalks would help the most in that particular situation. I definitely agree with the driving aspect. I have a nice car that's good in the snow, but I'm still worried about going up that hill in the winter. That really gravely concerns me. And if anything that I have said tonight carries on with you, please let it be that, that I'm scared for the winter. Thank you.
Is there, are there any other people who want to speak at public hearing? Seeing none, we close.
I'd just speak if I could.
Sure.
Thank you. Michael Hoffman, the Stone Church, 5 Grant Street. And I'd like to thank you for all the hard work you do. I'd also like you to remember that your department heads had looked at this and looked at all aspects of the change, not just one limited, not just in limited scope to one segment of roadway. We've already noticed dramatic reduction in cars going down Church Street. Those cars are coming around a blind corner with pedestrians in the street. Pedestrians who come up to the Stone Church have thanked us and said, "It is working better, I'm surprised." Actually, two of them were signers of that petition and now say they didn't realize exactly what the petition was about when they signed it, and it was more that they were opposed to any change than what all of the facts of the matter were. So, in respect to the blind driveways, the blind driveways are actually worse with traffic coming down the hill than they are going up the hill. What we've also noticed from our perch, because we really do have a bird's-eye view of this whole roadway looking down those stairs, is that cars are going much slower around the corner because they're accelerating to go around that corner rather than accelerating down a hill. And I'd always just go right back to that traffic engineering premise, that if you can't go up a hill, it's not safe to come down it. Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Dave Talmage, I'm 116 Main Street in town, and as far as a bird's-eye view, I'd just like to comment that I've played at the Stone Church, live musician, played there more times than probably any other human being, and I've never heard anybody say, "I tried to get to your gig, I heard about it, Stone Church is a legendary place, I couldn't get there because the road up," it's just, the premise baffles me that it's, the problem with the Stone Church is that the road going to the place is not easy to traverse.
Last call, does anybody have comments to make during the public hearing?
Barbara Briggs, 20 Chapel. I don't think you need to announce it to all of us, but somebody should check and make sure that Mike's statement is true, that he could name names on that petition of people who have asked to be taken out. Don't you think?
Well...
It's an opinion like anybody else has, we don't ask for names. We don't take them anonymous either which way.
Okay.
It's a consideration.
Okay.
Yep.
Last call, any further comments during the public hearing? With that, we close public hearing at 7:18. So, sure, go ahead.
I just want to make a statement on behalf of the staff, and clarify a couple things that were stated. One, this is not just the town administrator's recommendation, this is a recommendation of the Highway Safety Committee. It's made up of police chief, fire chief, who is also DPW director, town, community development director, who's the town planner, a member of the public, a member of the town council, and another member who was recused due to conflict of interest. And it was a unanimous vote then. I asked if there's any, asked staff if they would like to change anything, and all staff is standing by original recommendation. Just my clef, there's no recommendation for this to be a two-way road, we're just changing the flow, that was what was adopted, and...
Two-way to the top of the hill?
We're not...
Too late to the top of the hill?
We're not supposed to have a back and forth. So that's why I just want to make sure it's clear, there's nothing changed there. So yeah, staff stands by its original recommendation. And procedurally, now it's, the council can amend the original ordinance as is, as was presented, or can deny the petition.
I'd like to make a motion for the repeal of ordinance 5, 2017/2018, and ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the Code of the Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, making Church Street traffic one-way westerly.
We're waiting for a second. I don't know if, I'm not, I'm not asking anybody to second, I'm just saying that's what I'm doing. Okay, we have a second. Okay, so therefore, let's see, we begin with discussion. Yeah, discussion, please, anybody want to make a comment on that, on the motion up before us?
So, I was the sole vote against the passage of the ordinance last time, and I feel even more strongly now that it should be repealed at this point, hence my motion to do so. It boils down to, even though there was a committee that came up with the proposed ordinance, and it had the committee's backing and a level of expertise behind that, I found during the discussion that I was not convinced one way or the other of a change, a net change in safety. And what weighed on the side of voting against it for me was the number of people, residents of the town, who've taken the time to come and express their opposition to it, the many letters we've received from many different people, the several meetings where probably the largest crowds that we've had, you know, people showing up from the public of any topic that I've been on the council to see, and that just shows me that there is a lot of practical experience across the board of people who live on that street, a commitment to trying to convince the council of their concerns, are real, practical, strongly felt without getting angry or showing, you know, undue emotion, they've been expressed really clearly, and that just convinces me that the right thing to do for me is to make the motion to repeal it, and that my original vote was correct, and I wanted to make the motion to give the other councilors a chance to reconsider.
Okay, other comments?
So, I appreciate the commitment of the residents who are, who live on, near Church Street and their focus on this issue. I've certainly been on the, I've been on the opposite side of this on other issues, and I've sat in the audience and I've tried to convince council members of, to see my point of view, and I know how frustrating it can be when they don't see my point of view. So I appreciate that, and thank you for your involvement, and I hope to see the people who are in this audience on other issues in the future, and possibly on this issue as well. I think that when we are looking at anything, we're always kind of trying to find the balance between the needs of residents, the needs of businesses, the opinions of experts, as well as input from our own experiences and common sense. And sometimes, sometimes that is with the majority of the people in the room, and sometimes it's not with the majority of the people in the room, and that can be hard for us sitting up here. In this particular instance, I haven't seen any evidence to make me sway my vote and make me change my vote since the last time we voted, and it's only been six weeks, or, you know, six weeks since the change was implemented. I appreciated the anecdotal evidence that was presented, but again, it's hard for me to judge that because, like I said, it's only been a few weeks, and it is going to take time for people to recognize the change. People are going to drive up, you know, it doesn't surprise me that some people drove up the wrong way, because it's not intuitive that people are just going to know what the change is. So I certainly would be open to revisiting this in a year, or, you know, when there's maybe some more evidence at that point, but right now, I'm not in a position where I would want to change my vote.
And I'll kind of echo those comments too, because I think it's great to get input from the community, and I think when I received my packet, I kind of double-checked and kind of walked the street. When I heard some concerns, I quadruple-checked, went down it a few more times, and I just don't see much, I haven't heard much to change my initial decision on this, so I think I'm, you know, I'm not valuing one business over one neighborhood or one group of people over another, I just think from the big perspective, it increases safety for the entire town, in my opinion, so I'm kind of staying put where I am.
Anybody else? I'll add my comments. I mean, I think, I think the discussion has been, first of all, I think the way the citizens who have, who have approached, you know, the petition, the way the citizens have approached this has been excellent. I applaud all of the emails, I applaud the way you've approached it, I applaud the level of discourse, I think it's the way politics should work, and it works well at a local level. And I, and I really think the points raised just now, just the three councilors that have made their comments, and in particular, Counselor Cast, I would say I agree. I don't, I don't think there's a big safety difference one way or the other on this. I think, I think it's, it's a pretty slow piece of street. I've been to places where there are some pretty quirky streets and people get used to it. I've, I've listened to the concerns of the people that live there, and I've listened to what the, what the police chief, that, you know, public works, the people that make up the Public Safety Committee, and I find, like most other councilors, that there's nothing really that has changed, in my opinion, in the first place. And that's, that's, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, I don't think the whole, I think the whole process has worked as it should, but in the end, I remain the same way, and I'm entirely open to looking, re-looking at this again in a year, but for right now, I... but for right now, I, I'd like to see how it worked. I, I feel like when I drive up it, as a, you know, the, the other constituency that has an interest in this, there are the people that live on the street that have a strong interest in, on some of these issues that, I get that. You know, I'm very interested in what happens on the street in front of me. The other people, though, are the people that use that road, and, you know, and people that are driving it. I feel that it makes more sense from that standpoint than having, than it was before. So, I'm inclined to follow Council Weinstein's suggestion and give this more time to see how, how it seems to be in a, in a longer period of time trying it out. And so, that's how I'll vote. Is there any other comment at this point? Please proceed.
I was on the committee to vote for the changes. Stood behind the department heads who were involved and their decisions, agreed with their reasoning. What I'm seeing here tonight is outstanding as far as the involvement of the community. Hundred and forty, forty signatures, is that correct? That's outstanding. I wish that we had more people within the public who would come forward on other issues as well, because it's, it's pretty vacant, you know, the seats out here, so. I do, I don't see reasons to change it back at this point in time. So, I will still defy my original decision and the decisions of the department heads. Keep it as it is now, revisiting in a year, yeah, that's something that I can certainly stand behind. My vote is, keep it as it is.
Anybody else? Please call the roll.
I have, I have a question, I guess, point of order.
Sure.
I know that we were told we only had two options. So, as the person who made the motion, can I withdraw the motion and make a different motion to table the repeal petition?
No, the charter says there's only two options, and those are the options.
All right. I was trying to align it with some of the sentiment I'm hearing.
Yeah, the charter is, yeah, you only have two options, and that's...
Okay.
Yeah. Just for clarification, a vote of yea is to repeal the ordinance, a vote of nay is to keep the ordinance in place. Usually you vote in the positive, this is a vote in the negative. So, a vote of yea is to repeal. Council Burns?
Nay.
Council Finch?
Nay.
Council Dumont?
Upstate.
Council Cast?
Aye.
Council Bowden?
Nay.
Council Weinstein?
Nay.
Council Pike?
Nay.
Motion fails one to five to one.
Okay. Okay, moving on, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes of July eighteenth.
So moved.
Any changes or corrections?
Actually, I do see one. Under presence, it says, president was Council Burns, but also she was excused.
Oh.
So, she's, she's...
She's in two places.
I was not there.
Yeah, she was not there, yeah. I just want to make sure. I just noticed, I looked up, like, wait a minute.
Yeah, no, I was not there.
Yeah.
Okay. With that change, do I have, can we go to a vote, I guess, to approve?
Council Burns?
Upstate.
Council Finch?
Aye.
Council Dumont?
Aye.
Council Cast?
Aye.
Council Bowden?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero to one.
And we move on to the report of the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on my report is, one of the goals of the town council has had for the coming years to improve economic development in the community, specifically looking at the gateways, which is, we're defining as North Main Street, Exeter Road, and Route one fifty-two, attracting businesses to town. The community development director I have met with, Stu Arnett of ADG Consulting, about the benefits of hiring an economic development consultant versus a full-time director. After review, the community development director and I felt, feel that this could be the best way to go for the community. By contract with the firm, we have the benefit of various areas of expertise. If we need a planning consultation, they have people on staff. If we need marketing, they have that as well. Basically, the same way we have with our attorney, we have a firm versus one individual. The second is also whatever reason, if we're, we are not in need of the service, we don't use them. Where an employee would remain on staff or have to be eliminated. Much larger communities, the Newmarket, such as Dairy, used the same process for a while. Dairy, of course, is forty thousand people versus little under ten. For us, they ultimately decided they'd bring somebody on board, but I think this, at this point, would be a good, good thing to look at. So, I've invited Mr. Arnett to attend the joint Town Council Planning Board meeting, our regular meeting on September nineteenth, to discuss the idea. We would still issue an RFP for services to go up for open bid, and prior to asking the council and attorney to any agreement for this. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that there'd be an individual at the meeting just to discuss that at that point in time. Since summer's almost over, it's the time to begin the fiscal year twenty budget present, preparation. We are beginning that, the CIP process is beginning. The Environmental Services Director is beyond in a few minutes to discuss his CIP, because there's going to be an idea that we're going to float to the council, but also that I, by law, I must present to the town council no later than October fifteenth, my proposed budget. And then the council traditionally has an all-day workshop, which we have tentatively scheduled for October twenty-seventh, which is a Saturday. And they must adopt a budget by November fifteenth to send on to the municipal budget committee. So, I just want to make sure everyone realizes that. Just also to put in your calendars, because we're going to need assistance on September eleventh for the state primary. We need to have counselors present for the election, as election monitors. I'll send out a spreadsheet, like I've done for other elections, to be able to be there, and we need a quorum at the end to certify the vote, so. The next item on my written report and final item is that the, with the NHDOT project almost over, we realize that there's going to be a lot more pedestrian traffic on the North Main Street with the sidewalks. So, we've worked with Eversource and Affinity Lighting, who installed the LED lightings throughout town, and we're going to be increasing the number of light fixtures on North Main Street. So, right now, if you drive up, the arms are there, but no light fixtures yet. But we want to make sure that the area is safe for pedestrians, as well as make it attractive and look open for when we do want to do the economic development, as we said in the other portion. So, that is now being done right now. And that is all I have tonight. The Environmental Services Director, Sean Gregg, is here to present his twenty-year capital improvement plan to the council. One of the things at the end we're going to discuss is the potential of some projects that are coming up and some benefits of doing them sooner than, rather than later. So, I'm going to turn it over to Sean. Do you have the, you have the clicker there, need help?
Can I ask a question about the lighting?
Sure.
Before...
Yeah.
Yeah, and just so, I think it would be good too, if, if there are any questions, because a lot of times people have questions about the department report.
Sure.
And department head report. So, if you have questions about that, we'll do that kind of in order.
Sure, Sean's got it, so.
Yeah. So, go ahead, Tommy.
So, my question about the lighting. I know that with our downtown lighting, in the past, there have been some complaints that it was maybe too many lights.
Yep.
So, I'm, I'm curious about the, the frequency of lights, like, how that, who's determining that?
Eversource with the Public Works Director.
And will it be, like, the density of lights that we have?
No.
Okay.
No, it's not, this, downtown is much more pedestrian. There's a reason why it's bright down there versus up there. Will it be brighter than it is now? Yes. Will it be as bright as downtown? No.
Any, any other questions or comments about the department reports, that part of it?
Thank you for having me tonight. The topic tonight is about the water department, and this is for people that are on the water system. They are the rate users, that, that they're the ones that are actually going to have to flip the bill for this one. Just to give you a little bit of background, our water distribution system has twenty-seven miles of water main. Four and a half miles of that is, was put in in eighteen ninety-five. So, the original water system's from eighteen ninety-five, and four and a half miles of it is from that time era. So, we have some old pipe out there. The water supply, the Bennett well was put in in nineteen seventy-four. At that time, it pumped around two hundred and twenty gallons a minute. It's a gravel pack well. The Sewell was put in in nineteen eighty-five. It pumps at that time around two hundred and seventy gallons a minute. It's a gravel pack well, the Bennett and Sewell wells are on the same aquifer. However, due to the droughts, we have dialed those back so that they can make it through drought times. So, their actual pumping capacity has been reduced. We currently pump the Bennett well at a hundred and thirty gallons a minute and the Sewell at two hundred gallons a minute. So, it's been a reduction in capacity. The Packers Falls Surface Water Plant was, I believe, started way back in the twenties. The last time it was upgraded was in the late nineteen eighties. It was a million gallon a day plant. It ran very seldom in the nineties because it was cheaper to run the Bennett Sewell wells. However, during two thousand and one, it came online during the drought because the Bennett Sewell wells were overpumped and couldn't produce water. But in two thousand and four, it could not meet safe drinking water standards. So, we lost a million gallons of water a day. There was a study done that said, move it to another place on the river at a cost of eleven and a half million dollars, and that was two thousand and four. The decision was made at that point in time to look for additional groundwater because it's a lot less expensive, and that's when we found the McIntosh and Tucker wells. The McIntosh well has some water quality issues. It was brought online a couple of years ago. We use the distribution water from the Bennett Sewell wells on a sixty-forty blend, sixty McIntosh, forty Bennett Sewell, so that it is, we can pump it into the system. It's not a standalone well, it's three hundred gallons a minute. It needs Bennett Sewell at this point in time. The Tucker well has been permitted, it also has issues with water quality arsenic, so it will require treatment. That is a two hundred and seventy-five gallon a minute well. That is the Tucker well. That's the last well, and it's not in service yet. The last piece of the puzzle is the Great Hill Water Tower that was installed in nineteen seventy-seven. It's three-quarters of a million gallons. We actually had to strip the paint off it in nineteen ninety-seven because it had lead paint, and it was repainted. So, what did we use to develop this twenty-year plan? We used three different reports. The capital improvement plan update from two thousand and eleven, the asset management plan done by Underwood in seventeen, and a twenty-year water and wastewater system build-out study performed by Wright Peers. The water system update, the purpose was, it was to look at and validate some, some recommendations that were done in the past. From that, working with the town council, we came up with the following projects. We've completed these four out of five projects. We have not completed the Bennett Sewell project because of the drought and because we needed them to operate the McIntosh well. They are currently under design. This next one was a water asset management plan, which was presented to the town council. It was to look at our asset inventory, it was to determine what were our most critical assets were, do some life cycling costs, and do some loan term funding strategies. The important thing to know about the asset management plan is, only looks at the infrastructure that you have currently. It does not look for any future infrastructure. And that's where, actually, I'll get into that afterwards. So, from this, it actually identified in two thousand and seventeen dollars the following pipe replacements, which totaled just shy of five million dollars for the first ten years. And then the second ten years, going from twenty-eight to thirty-seven, it identified four and a half million dollars in two thousand seventeen dollars, excuse me. So, the last piece of the puzzle was the build-out study. The build-out study looked at the next twenty years at our growth and looked at whether we had enough treatment capacity for our wastewater system and enough pumping capacity and for our water system. The results were that the sewer has enough capacity and is all set for the next twenty years. However, the water said that we need both safe yield and more safe pumping capacity. And how they said we could do that was treat McIntosh well, make it a standalone well, and then add on Tucker treatment and, and development. And the total cost was six point six million in two thousand and eighteen.
Sean, can I ask a question?
Yes, yep, go right ahead.
Yeah, on the, when you say you need to trust, have McIntosh needs to be, be treated so that it's a standalone well, you're still planning, Sewell and Bennett wells will still...
Yes, yes.
Continue to operate, they just won't be relied upon for blending purposes.
Correct. It'll actually give you more flexibility if you lose a well or if you want to rest a well, or during summertime, when you hit your peak times, you'll be able to run all those and keep the tank full when you get those, those big-time draws during the summer. So, why do the twenty-year plan? Number one reason, it combines all the plans together and puts them into one, so we can identify how much and when, so we can plan for what's going to happen. The ability to forecast rates, so we know what it's going to cost. And the ability to seek out grants and funding. Because when you actually look at this next slide, the important thing is, these are all needs. They're not something that are wants. These are things that have to happen. Just about all that pipe on there was installed in eighteen ninety-five. In addition, it puts in also water supply that we need to reach our twenty-year build-out, so that we have enough water for when we bring in businesses or we bring in other developments and those kind of things. Here, we actually spread them out and divided them up, and we actually escalated those costs to the year that they're going to be done. So, the cost that you're seeing in that year is the cost of what we think it's going to cost at that point in time. So, the first round of projects and how we did this, and I'm actually going to have a different slide later on because we had a meeting today, we were looking to bite off projects a little at a time. So, we'd actually go back to the council each time, or go back to the public to try and get projects to move forward. And how that was, was working is, we were looking to do the Bennett Sewell upgrades and the water treatment first, and maybe do one or two others, depending on how funding was going to come in. We actually do have six hundred thousand set aside in our capital improvement plan for the Bennett Sewell wells. But the big piece of those first two projects that we have on there is that they actually shore up our water supply. So, water rates, when it really bites down to, you know, where does it hit the farm and, you know, what's it going to cost and where are we at? The current water rate is four dollars and ninety-five cents per hundred cubic feet. A hundred cubic feet is seven hundred and forty-eight gallons, which means a gallon costs two-thirds of a penny. So, if you fill up a gallon at your faucet, it costs you two-thirds of a penny. The average single home, and I'm not talking businesses, this is for two thousand and seventeen, consumes thirty-six thousand two hundred gallons in a year. I know a lot of people don't believe it, but that's the numbers. The current water rate is enough to meet our, our operations and our current debt service. It's not enough to go out and do these plans. It's not enough to do our asset management or our build-out study findings. So, water rates are, increases are necessary. I threw this slide in just to give an idea of what we get when we raise the rates. So, every fifty cents we raise the rates, based on what we took in in two thousand and seventeen, we get eighty thousand dollars. Grants and loans. In the past, where the town has got most of its loans is through the SRF program, the State Revolving, Revolving Loan Fund, which is, comes from the feds and is worked out with the state because they match money and they get money, and then they pass out loans to what they feel are the most deserving projects. Some of the projects where we received money from was the water main that went up the, from one oh eight to the water tower. It was a million-dollar project, they gave us forty percent forgiveness, so we only had to pay back six hundred thousand dollars. We actually got very lucky that year. We actually got twenty percent on the, on the blending facility. That is harder to get now through the SRF, generally through the SRF now, you get about ten to fifteen percent. The second and new kid on the block is the New Hampshire Drinking The second and new kid on the block is the New Hampshire Drinking Water Groundwater Trust Fund, which the town, which the, not the town, but the state won a big settlement from Exxon. And they're using that money for water infrastructure. So, the town is number nine on the Drinking Water SRF priority list and that's for the blending facility, for the treatment of the McIntosh well and the Tucker well. The top eight are being funded, so we're just shy of receiving money. If someone from that drops off in front of us, we will start to receive money from that.
What's the likeliness of that happening?
The top one on the list right now is, I can't remember the name of the community, but they asked for a large grant and they're only... Lancaster. And there's a good possibility they may drop off the list. There's a very good possibility because they asked for a hundred percent grant and that's not going to happen. The other one, though, is the Trust Fund. The McIntosh and Tucker well treatment is actually number one on the list. And we're receiving right now, based on the preliminary, twenty-five percent grant on that. So, what that means is three point nine million project, two point eight loan and just shy of a million dollars in grant. So, the next vote on that is August thirtieth. If they finalize it, then the town would need to pass a warrant article. I've been going to these meetings regularly and these hearings. And the biggest thing and the reason I put this on because we're going to go into the next and where I recommend in the discussions that the town administrator and I had with rural development today is to go a different route rather than going every single year or every other year to get funds. The New Hampshire Water Drinking Fund is looking for skin in the game. I've heard it every single meeting I went to. And what they mean about skin in the game is that they want to make sure that people are doing, or not people, but towns and cities are doing their asset management plans, they're doing their capital improvement plans, they're doing preliminary engineering, they're putting investing into their system, they're taking care of their system. You get points for that, which moves you to the top of the list. And that's why our projects have tended to move to the top of the list because we've been doing all those things. They don't want to give out money to a community that takes the money, fixes it, and then five, ten years down the road says it's broke again and comes back and wants more money. So, that's one. They're also looking for partnerships. They're looking, and what I mean by partnerships, they're looking for you to go to find other areas of funding. Rural Development, SRF program. They're also looking for private partnerships. So, if you're putting on a add-on to your system and it's putting on some sort of economic development, that's what they want the drinking water money to go to. They're also being very careful on how much they hand out every year because they want this to last and to stretch that money as far as they can. The last one is, two is water rates. They take a look at your water rates. They took, take a look at your water rates compared to median household income. So, having the lowest water rate is not necessarily the best thing. They want you to have skin in the game. They want you to be taking care of your system and making sure that you're paying your fair share. Excuse me. So, the, actually, I'm actually missing that slide in this program. I actually looked in and it's gone. My next slide was going to be, I actually checked it on my computer and it was there, but it's not on this one. My next slide was supposed to be for the system for going and getting one large loan. Going for a twelve million dollar loan rather than going for bits and pieces. Now, the reason why we are bringing this up tonight is because we sat down with Rural Development and they're under the impression that if we go in and another community, I believe it was Plymouth, New Hampshire did it, they went and got eighteen million dollar project to try and take care of all their water projects. The reason why they did it is right now you're in the lowest interest rate of all time. So, your interest rates are very low. Two, you can leverage and get a lot more money from, for forgiveness or for grants and loans. So, in other words, you're going to make up on a lot of your projects by getting possibly thirty percent funding or forty percent funding on all your projects versus going back each time. So, there's a big savings there. And it also bites into that large amount. The other piece is, I've escalated those dollars out to future. If you do them now, and I'm not saying do them all right now, you bond it, but you try and get them done in the first several years, but you save on that escalation of what it costs to do the project. And we found, and on those list is the ones that were on the list that make up the twelve point three million, excuse me, was the McIntosh well Tucker treatment. It was also to put in the Tucker well, so that would be done. You'd have both water sources done. And then as part of that was the South Street Water Main.
South.
South Main Street Water Main, which that one is very important to the town because that's where the Bennett Sewell well water wants to come to get to the main town. Only a hundred gallons a minute can get through that right now. It actually has to go up Grant Road and around to the water tower and then back down to get to the main street. Bay Road was another one on that water, on that list and so was New Road. The last one on the list was running a water main to Moody Point because their water has become contaminated with arsenic and chloride.
I'll address some of that because of that. The Moody Point project is, we've had some preliminary discussions. If that were to go to fruition, their portion, the law is that they cannot borrow the money because they're not a municipality. We would basically borrowing the money on their behalf. They would be paying a betterment assessment fee for the connection of their, to their, to the system. So, they would actually have a different rate than the rest of the rate payers for a period of time to pay off the debt. That's just, you know, such a big project for that that we thought that would be the fairest way to do it. As Sean said, you know, I'm not one to go out, especially after issuing a lot of debt for other projects. But this for us is the best, probably the best time to do so. As Sean mentioned, rates are low. Our, our own water rates are low. Debt is actually, and it's a strange thing, but debt's not a bad thing for municipalities. It helps, as you said, it helps us leverage other projects and also we should have it for our own bond ratings. And to be quite frank, we've put off a lot of projects for many, many, many years anticipating a different, the school project. We didn't want to put our projects on the ballot at the same time because we didn't want things to fail. We need to start looking at our infrastructure. As Sean mentioned, a lot of these pipes are not, we're not saying nineteen sixties, we're saying eighteen hundreds. And we want to make sure, I would have said Sean did this on purpose today, but there was a water main break today on Dame Road. But it wasn't, it was just luck of the draw. So, yeah, we are seeing failure in our system. The reason why we're bringing it up is because we want to do more research to go after, number one, if in March we ask for the bond and two, to start lining up for the grants to offset this. I mean, we've already anticipating probably about two million dollars to offset that? Or what were you thinking, grants?
On, on that total loan package, when I look at the savings through interest and I look through on escalations costs, it's about a million. But on that other part, if we're borrowing ten million, which is pretty much what it comes down to, if we get twenty-five, thirty-five, or thirty percent funds on that, you're talking a seven million dollar project versus a ten million dollar, you know, payback. And that's what it's really coming down to. The Drinking Water Trust Fund is huge. It's, you need to get into it and you need to try and attack it and try and get as much money out of it as you can.
This is very, it's, to use, to compare to another program, it's kind of like the stimulus package a few years ago that if you're shovel ready and you can get in line, you can get the money, this money runs out. This isn't a continuous project, you know, it's not going to come back. So, that's why we're thinking, we'd rather try to get the money and appropriate a larger amount to do the project. Doesn't mean you would, you know, issue the bonds right away, oh, we're asking for his permission. And we can always not do projects if we don't, not issue the debt. But the way the law is, we have to issue the debt for the entire project.
Do you lock your interest rate when you...
We do. So, you know, that's why we, in discussing today with the Rural Development, I really saw the benefits of trying to get this done, you know, issue it at once to try to leverage these additional funds that are available now before the next time we hit another recession or, you know, little slip in the economy and try to do it then.
I think there's a fairly wide expectation too that interest rates are only temporarily low, but inflation is likely. I mean, construction rates have been going up pretty strongly already. And I, I think we've seen some of that hit us on some of the other projects we're trying to do in town, so it's...
It's definitely something that should be discussed and decided on what the best avenue for us to go forward, especially with all these projects that need to get done.
How does it look to, does, do you sort of, I mean intuitively, and I don't apply any expertise whatsoever to it, but intuitively, it seems to me that if you were to sort of holistically do engineering for all of these and sort of plan these projects and line up your workers, you could do it more efficiently than if you sort of are trying to pace it out.
It's difficult to pace it out. It's very difficult. The biggest thing is, the rude awakening is, they're aggressively trying to pass this money out. And looking at how I put the applications in to get money, I wish I would have put a lot more in because I think we could have benefited right in the first round and would have really helped the town a lot and reduce that number at the end of the day. I also feel at the same point is, as we take on debt and we retire debt, you're able to take on more debt, which will keep your rates level. It's that first bite of the apple that you have to take, which is going to be the hard, hard piece. But then, once you take that bite, you're able to manage your debt as you go along. Having no debt makes it very difficult.
Is my, my thinking correct that also if you, if you do this, if you fund this through debt, you're not chasing, you know, incremental funding from other sources, right?
Yes.
And that it's more risky that you might not get it or it's not predictable?
The big thing Rural Development was trying to talk this into was, they're looking to give out money, but you need to be a certain size project to get that money. So, and you need to take out a large amount of money to get that money is basically what they were saying. So, if we were to take out a twelve million dollar bond, we'd go to Rural Development, try and get our piece. We'd go to SRF and try and get a piece and then go to the Drinking Fund and try and get a piece. So, all three would be throwing in money so we could maximize our, our benefit.
Can I, I just wanted to follow on that, Steve?
Yeah.
If, you can talk about this amount of, this amount of the loan, where does that put us overall with debt?
For water and sewer?
We have approximately...
I mean, the town overall.
Town's very little debt. I'm trying to think, do we all have, we have no bonds at this point. Water and sewer does.
Yes.
But then that's, see, there's two different funds. The enterprise funds has their debt and we have our debt.
Which is different than the school debt?
Which is different than the school debt. So, water and sewer debt is, water is...
Water has about two point six million in debt.
Which is low.
But the, we are indebted to taxpayers.
No, rate payers, rate payers.
Oh, the rate payers?
This is not the taxpayers, this is always the rate.
This is, that's why I said in the beginning, this is just for water rate users.
So, when we, when we had that warrant article, it says, what's the impact on the tax rate? It's zero.
Okay.
It's, I know, it's, it's, the rate payers are paying. But it's, it's not, there's no impact on the tax rate. It's the rate payers.
I have a question. So, first a comment and that's, I know that we're not voting on anything tonight, but, I mean, just from my experience sitting on the council and prior to that, being an observer of the council, that Sean has an incredible track record of being a steward of our rate payers' dollars and making sure that you're, you've just managed the whole system really incredibly well. And so, I've appreciated that even though I'm not a rate payer. So, there's that, but I have a question. You mentioned the, a few things. You mentioned the McIntosh well.
Yes.
And back when that was being bonded, just if you could refresh my memory, I remember a conversation, like we could pay a little more and make it...
Expandable?
Expandable, make it easier to blend. I mean, there were some issues at the time if I...
The...
I'm curious if we spent that extra money or if we're going back now and spending more.
We made sure that everything in that building can be reused.
Okay.
So, the pumps are designed to take the Tucker and McIntosh well. The clear well can be reused for when the treatment dumps in to pump it into the system. So, nothing in that, in that blending facility was wasted.
Okay.
Everything was...
Is the building itself big enough to...
It is not. It is not.
That will require expansion.
Yes, yes.
And was that something that at the time, if we had spent a little more, is that what I'm remembering? Like, I'm remembering a conversation with maybe some members of the community who...
It's very difficult because...
Didn't think we need to do as much.
We actually have to go back and relook at what the treatment is. And that's the problem. So, the treatment's kind of changed based on what the water quality is.
And then my other question is about the water treatment facility building that we have and kind of where that stands, what, the, the, on Packers Falls.
Drinking water down on Packers Falls?
Yeah, and sort of...
We are moving all the, and that's the project I'm going to discuss later. We're moving all the control equipment from the water department out. We're just about, we're in the middle of that project. I'm thinking probably around November, the water department will be totally moved out and then there'll have to be some sort of decision on what we do with that building. So, that can...
So, that's something that...
Yes, yep.
We'll be looking at in the future.
The other question I had was related to, when you, one of your slides compares water costs throughout the area towns.
Can I, want me to finish the presentation?
Sure.
Sorry.
You went straight to questions.
So, this one here, and I want to put this out. I actually took, compiled everybody in two thousand and seventeen water use. So, this looks at single family homes, okay? There's approximately fifteen hundred and eighteen single family homes. If you look at the first two columns, that's the water consumption range. So, if you look down at the yellow forty-nine and forty, the first two columns, that's someone using anywhere from forty hundred cubic feet to forty-nine hundred cubic feet. And the reason that is yellow is because if you go to the next two columns, that's the same thing, it's just a range in gallons. So, twenty-nine hundred, nine hundred and twenty gallons to thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-two gallons. The reason that's in yellow is because that's pretty close to the thirty-six thousand two hundred average. That's why I put that there. So, the average water user pays about two hundred and forty-two dollars a year for just water consumption. Okay? And there's two hundred and thirty-five people in that group that pay in that range, which makes up, you know, fifteen and a half percent of the whole group. And then fifty-eight percent of the people pay two hundred and forty-two dollars or less, if that makes sense to everybody. I just wanted everybody to get an understanding of where the water use is and where, what people's water bill actually is for just drinking water. There are people that use a lot more water. Those tend to be the ones that are only on the water system. They're not on the sewer system. If there's any questions to this, I've got the answer for that. I just wanted people to get an understanding what people are paying, what the groups are, where the ranges are. The next one I want to reiterate, you go to your faucet, you fill up three one gallon jugs, it's basically two pennies. This is the area, I basically use forty-eight hundred cubic feet because that's the closest to thirty-six hundred and two hundred, thirty-six thousand two hundred gallons. Our rate's four dot, four ninety-five. We're actually pretty close to the Portsmouth and Dover. Durham and Exeter are above us. It's two sixty-one. That also includes a quarterly six dollar charge. So, that's basically an average rate user, that's what they pay for a year.
Is that per person?
That's per single... That's per single family home.
Single family home.
Single family home. This is only single family homes. And I, the reason I do that is because that's the state, that's what they look like, look at.
Yeah, well, since we are on that slide, the question I was going to ask about was the, essentially, if, if we, if you raise the rates as you're proposing, that.
Yeah.
As you gave in your example, we'd move up closer to Exeter at the end of the day would be about right. Because the other towns may be moving up too. They may have things that they have to do. So, we still may be towards the lower end instead of.
We could be, yes. And the thing is, is we got to look and maybe increase our rates like we are now every year. Because then we won't have to raise them as much because you're getting the money earlier and you're able to offset those increases a little bit, kind of like what we did on the wastewater side.
Sure.
Yes.
I understand that these are for, well, they're numbers here. Slide twenty are for single family homes.
Yeah.
Is there any? I'm sure you have the data as far as what the state Chaney would be using.
What do you, actually, can you re-say that? Because I didn't quite get it.
Sure. Understanding this is for single family homes?
Yes.
Looking at the apartment buildings, such as a Chaney and.
The apartment buildings, uh, consume about twenty-seven thousand gallons a year. Each single unit.
Each unit.
About twenty-seven. So, they use a lot less water, which makes sense because they don't have yards they're watering, you know, and those kind of things.
Okay, but how many units are in an average building?
Uh, I do not know that.
So, it's, I guess, collectively, is there? Do you have a, a number as far as how much more water or, or what the total amount of water usage that they have?
So, I guess if I could say this, I have done each, I have done apartment units. So, what a, one apartment unit uses on average is around twenty-seven thousand gallons.
So, if it had a ten unit building, you'd get to two seven.
Yeah.
Two hundred and seventy thousand.
So, I don't know what the big buildings do or whatever. I just did it.
And are they charged the same amount, the same per gallon fee?
Yes. And they're also charged six dollars per unit for the quarterly charge.
Okay.
So, if you have a hundred units, you're going to pay six doll, um, six hundred dollars per quarter for that building. Just for the quarterly charge.
Thank you.
We just went to the questions and, you know, water main repairs. And then, uh, the sewer. I put that in for you as well, what the comparison was.
I'll mention it here just because I, one of the things that was in your, your, uh, your department report and what I've been noticing was, uh, it's really impressive, you know, with all of the, uh, concerns about the need to get to, uh, is it parts per million, three parts per million, the three level? That we're there with, with the less expensive technology, which seems tremendous.
Yeah, we're knocking it out of the park.
And is it, do you expect that to, to not get worse? Do we expect to stay where we are?
I expect to stay where we are as, um, as we increase our capacity, our flow. We will not, we'll have a more difficult time to hit that mark. So, the biggest part of it is because we're not, we're at about half capacity right now, which allows more treatment time.
And again, we apologize that we literally got the information this morning on such a big project, but you know, as Council IC mentioned, Sean's been very good steward of the money for the ratepayers over the years since definitely number of years I've been here. And I'm, you know, personally, I'm not always, I'm pretty conservative with the budgets as well. And we wouldn't be coming forward with a plan such as this unless we really thought it was for the best of the community at this point in time. That's why we want to continue down this road and look at this, um, much more intensely. Especially, you know, in working with the, the individuals at Moody Point to try to solve their problem the same fell swoop. But I think this would help us get really ahead of the curve with a lot of our infrastructure pro, projects and problems that we have for the water, uh, department.
So, what, what is the next step?
The next step is we're gonna really line this up and get all the more concrete figures to come forward to the council during budget season and ask to issue a bond for the, the water department in that amount or a more concrete. Also during that time, Sean will solidify possible grants and, uh, loan savings that we can have. It's sort of like, if you remember when we did the wastewater plant, we borrowed fourteen million, but we actually only have to pay back ten. Because of the grants we got. Same kind of idea here. We're going to borrow twelve. Part of it's going to be paid by, hopefully, the Moody Point individuals if that's how we hook up. If not, we just remove that from there. Um, and the rest, we would be leveraging grants and, um, loan forgiveness against it.
I had a question about the Aug- August thirtieth date for, so it says it's a final vote for the final list of funded projects. So, we're going to know pretty quickly what by that date.
Out of the ones we submitted. And we submitted three projects. And, um, the, the funny thing about the Drinking Water Trust Fund though, is they can appropriate, they're different. They can appropriate money at any time. Depending on what the, how important the project is. They actually can do that, so.
I believe they did that for the Merrimack. Was it Merrimack or?
It was the Manchester to bring water down to the, uh.
Yeah, Litchfield, yeah.
The troubled areas.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So, even though there's that August thirtieth date, they could.
The August thirtieth date is to solidify their list of applications that they got this year. They did say on some of those, they're going to hold back and maybe wait to appropriate more funds later.
I'd be keeping an eye on that one.
Oh, I'm hoping I will be there on August thirtieth. So, but it, as the town administrator said, the next step is for us to go and, and really work with rural development, to work with the Drinking Water Trust Fund and to also work with the state to try and see what we can, what we can leverage the best. So, what's best for the town.
I just have one other question. Can we, can we sell off those antique pipes? Full of gas. Pretty valuable.
Yeah, some decision's going to have to be made on the water plant.
Yeah.
So, what happens to that? Um, and there are some valuable pumps down in that, in that plant. And a lot of people have a lot of interest in that plant because it's such a nice spot on the water.
So, I mean, we have the potential that this could be on the, on our warrant.
Correct.
We also have the potential to have something related to the dam.
Correct.
On the warrant. Is there anything else that you foresee?
We're gonna.
Because it could, it could be a lot, which could be overwhelming.
We are postponing New Road at this point. There's a lot more work that needs to be done on that project. So, we're originally going to come forward with that. The drainage, uh, issues there, but we need to do more work, so we're not going to come forward with that. Other than that, there's only two issues I can see. Would be the dam, which would actually, yes, that would be on the, the taxpayers versus the, this would be on the ratepayers.
Right, which is a tough, it can be a tough concept for people to grasp.
I completely understand.
And I think the biggest thing is the town administrator, we're trying to get a feeling of how you want to attack this. Do you want to go after it as, as one big apple or do you want to bite it off a little piece of the time? And that's why we're here to open, to start that discussion.
Yeah, I, I think the sense I have, I don't, you're not asking for any vote tonight.
No.
But I think, I think you probably get the sense that, uh, we're, uh, for the most part, and what I, what I would, the way I would read the council is that we're, you know, agreeing with the, the approach you guys are suggesting. I think that would be a little. If somebody thinks I'm misreading them, please say otherwise, but I would, I would, it makes sense to me and I think it seems to make sense to the council.
I mean, this is just, so we'll be doing the research and we're not going to, you know, spin our wheels and we'll come forward. If it looks good at the end, we'll recommend it. If not, we'll recommend not going forward with that, so.
Perfect. Very good.
Can I ask a completely unrelated question?
Sure.
But since you're here.
Yeah.
Um, this was something that I was going to bring up in closing comments. Um, and there have been a lot of reports from North Hampton about a car wash that was using chemicals.
Yes.
Um, that also operates in New Market. And there have been some concerns brought to the council from, um, residents here in New Market about what might be happening to our, what chemicals might be going into the area because obviously it's not going into our water, into our drinking water.
Yes.
Because our drinking water is coming from somewhere else, but I think that there is a concern that obviously our stormwater or sewer can't absorb necessarily a hundred percent of the PFAs.
PFOAs, yes.
PFOAs that are being released.
The difference, I believe, from North Hampton is they have a septic system, which makes it go right into the ground.
Right.
We have, um, ours goes into the sewer, which comes to the wastewater treatment plant, and we have tested for PFOAs and those things and they have not shown up.
They haven't?
No.
Okay, because that was my question is, you know, what's happening, uh, whether or not we are doing any testing and, um, because we don't want it to go anywhere, right? If they're using those sorts of chemicals, then it's going somewhere.
Yes, but it's probably not enough to show up in our sludge or to show up in our effluent.
Okay.
So. Because we haul off, I want to say about seventy tons of sludge a month.
How often do you test?
We test quarterly for the sludge. We're required through waste management to do that. And we've tested the effluent, uh, a couple times.
Can you say it's too low to even show up?
It hasn't shown up. It has not shown up. That's definitely the biggest, if it was to show up, it would generally show up in the sludge. And that's where a lot of the towns are having the trouble. Because it sits, a lot of times what it does, it sits in their, in their pipes and then all of a sudden they get slugs to the plant, which then it shows up. Because they've been testing their, um, um, collection system. And we have not had it shown up, so.
How, how long has that been looked for or been measured for?
For us, it's only been recently on our sludge. It's only been since, uh, probably a year, uh, before we came online with the new facility. So, the last couple of years. We had to because some of ours went land spread.
Does that mean, sorry?
They used it to as an amendment, um, and spread it across the land.
Oh, okay.
The sludge is spread?
Yeah. So, what they do is they mix it with amendments and then they bring it up to a certain pH and then it's able to be used on, on land. But if it has PFOAs.
Everyone's familiar with what sludge is, correct?
Yes.
It's the byproduct of the wastewater plant.
It's all detailed.
I just want to make sure we all know what it is. It's just a nice way to say it.
Are there any other agencies that do testing? Like is it, or is it, you know what I mean? Like is there anyone from the state coming to do testing or anything like that?
We're required to send that to the state afterwards. So, the state gets those numbers from the, um, land application. I can't even remember the name of who we were using. We have just recently tested for our drinking water supply for PFOAs and they did not show up.
Okay, so, so we, it's being measured and the way our system works, it's not just a measurement of one, like, like the car wash. It would be anything coming through the system, right?
Yeah.
So, the total levels are too low to detect?
Too low, yes. I mean, because when we're talking on the water system, we're talking parts per trillion. So, it's pretty low.
Which, a part, per trillion part is if you have an Olympic sized swimming pool, you have an eyedropper. You drop one drop in, that's per trillion.
It's meaning if you have a trillion balls, only, you know, one ball is, is, yeah, it's pretty small.
And I assume that's well below the, the levels that are currently.
Yes, I'd have, I'd have to go back and look and see what the level, acceptable level is. I cannot recall. You're really getting to me now. Yeah, I totally prepared for that one.
Do you spot test businesses periodically or locations that could theoretically be, um, not necessarily intentionally, but could accidentally put stuff into the water stream instead of just waiting for the sludge to come?
We do not.
Okay.
We have had some businesses that used to be in the mills that we would monitor because we would see dyes come down. Uh, but not, we don't see anything anymore.
Okay, thank you.
I think we've, we've covered that topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we move on to committee reports.
Got a couple.
Okay.
Uh, to the planning board, we have a joint meeting coming up on the nineteenth, correct?
Yes.
Uh, I, I hadn't heard yet whether it was, whether an agenda had been agreed upon yet or.
I think we've generally talked about what we will talk about. I talked to Steve last week and we were supposed to have a meeting.
Yeah.
I haven't seen you.
The planner's on vacation, so.
Oh, okay. Well, when the planner gets back, we're going to have a meeting with the, uh, with the vice chair of the planning board. Because the planning board chair won't be there. It's a valve.
Right.
And then we're going to have a meeting to, to discuss agenda.
Just trying to stay on top of that.
I appreciate the encouragement.
Because he comes up at every meeting.
Yeah, no, I, I think that we definitely will be, uh, talking about that. We, we know in general terms that we're, this is an opportunity to, to discuss. Uh, you know, sort of the will of the council in terms of, since they will, you know, the, the planning board would be working on any zoning changes that would then go to the council. It seemed to make, it's sort of mandated now by the charter and also makes sense for the, for this joint meeting to, to make sure we have a meeting of the minds on some of those things before it's otherwise.
And if I'm, I probably should have gone back and checked, but I'm, so my memory may be faulty, but I think they were, the, the board was looking for the town council to raise anything or provide a direction. You may have already.
So, that's what we're going to discuss.
Yeah.
That's what we're, which would, would be another way of saying that we could, uh, it would be good, I think we're, we're shooting to have that meeting a week after next.
Yep.
Because that would give time for you to, you're going to meet as a planning board in September on the eleventh, correct? Election night, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you will be meeting before we meet as a joint meeting.
Right.
So, that would be good for us to have that agenda meeting in prior to that.
Right, so the, they kind of, I think they were hoping to know what the topics would be.
Right. I, I mean, we discussed them in general. They haven't changed what the general thinks we're going to, because I was there at one of the planning board meetings.
I know you've heard it too.
So, so, and I said, this is what we, I think we will talk about and they, they said, yeah, that sounds good. So, I, I, but I understand they'd like it to be more detailed than that.
And then CIP is, uh, uh, the administrator mentioned or alluded to is, is gearing up. Uh, the, the town planner is already trying to put together, uh, a first meeting either next week or the week after. That hasn't been set yet, but, um, it's in the works.
Dale, I have one.
Sure.
Cool. So, first, um, I'm pretty sure that the next meeting of the budget committee is on August twenty-seventh, which is next Monday. I haven't heard anything from my fellow budget committee members, but I believe that was the last date that we had determined at our, our previous meeting. As, uh, our next meeting. And, um, the last time we were all together, we established the Water Rights Subcommittee, uh, to reach out to the members of Answer and other, uh, community members who wanted us to further pursue the idea of a rights-based ordinance, freedom from chemical trespass. Similar issue that had come before this council once before, but we had denied. We had met first on August first to set a general meeting structure, how we wanted things to go. We had meetings for the fifteenth, one for the twenty-sixth of September and a final one set for October tenth. Correct me if I'm wrong in any of those dates. The August fif- fifteenth meeting was to have members who are in the pro side come forward, give testimony, talk a bit about, allow for a bit of a round robin questioning by myself and the other members of the Water Rights Subcommittee to really kind of get to the nitty gritty about what exactly they're looking for and possible issues that could come forward in town. The next meeting for the twenty-sixth is going to be an invite for those who may be against or have submitted, um, uh, items that would strongly favor, favor us not pursuing a rights-based ordinance in town. And specifically, I intend on sending a letter of invite to the town administrator and the town attorney or the legal firm since they drafted the letter, but also. since they drafted the letter, but also Steve was very well versed in the reasons why. But to um allow us to take what we took from the first meeting, from the folks who wanted us to pass and, you know, put it towards the, the legal challenge, legal muster before actually bringing it forward to this committee. Questions?
Well, it sounds like a thorough effort, I'll say that.
It has been uh interesting, to say the least.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so the uh Energy and Environment Advisory Committee met last night. And um, our focus really at this point has been on composting. I, I can't remember if I reported about our prior meeting or not, but we had a representative from Mr. Fox who came. And so um, as a result of that, our meeting in, our July meeting, we uh contacted the towns that Mr. Fox has municipal contracts with. And that's um Rye, Portsmouth, Elliot and Durham. And we heard back from three of those communities. And they all kinda do things a little bit differently. Um, so we're gonna be putting together a presentation uh first to reach out to um the DPW director and talk to, and talk to um him about what we found. And then eventually bring it to the town council. Cause um, one quick takeaway is that these programs that have been implemented in other communities, while they have not saved money, they have been cost neutral. And they have certainly saved um landfill usage. So um, so yeah, that's where we're at.
They're cost neutral because less, less money is being collected as trash. Less, less garbage is being collected, trash is being collected.
Right, right. And so, I mean, and, and again, like different communities have done it. Some have, it's, it's basically a free service. Um, Portsmouth subsidizes curbside pickup and they also have, eh, eh, they also have something at their transfer station. So it's, it's very town by town. Um, if you talk to Elliot, they have said that they've saved a ton of money, but they also do everything in-house. So it's a very different system. Um, so what we can kinda, what we've been able to suss out is that it's basically cost neutral.
Do you guys look at all in your deliberations about, I mean, I, I am struck, you know, I, I do my own home composting now, but I also buy compost for the, for the landscape. And the last few years noticed, and I think some of it is because it's, some of the, the landscape that's collected from, the compost that's collected from homes and it gets resold through the landscape company. And, and at times there is a lot of contamination of plastics and wrappers and stuff that shows up in that compost. And which is, you know, if you use it as a mulch, which it can be a good way to use it, you can spread it on the top, then you end up, it can become somewhat unsightly to have all this stuff. You end up spending some time picking that up. So I, I was wondering if different composting programs have looked at the contamination level and what? Cause you can see why if you're putting trash in there, you can see that people would say, well, you know, I'll get, it's, it's mostly compost.
Right.
You know, and so, and I, I, the reason I'm kind of bringing it up is that there have been, I've seen a couple of programs talking, or, or things on NPR, talking about contamination by microplastics and the sort of level of environmental plastics contamination. And so, I mean, it would be something, if there was some kind of quality control. I know it's a problem for recyclables as well, that they get contaminated with things that are not supposed to be there and it ruins their market value to an extent. But also on compost, contamination should probably be something that's part of the discussion, see what can be done to improve that.
And that's something that we, we actually talked about last night. Because I think that there's a difference between having a free service and having a service that you have to pay for. Um, and you know, recycling is free. We're not, you don't have to buy a bag to do your recycling, even though we're paying for it. Um, and I know from personal experience, from someone in my household who shall not be named, sometimes puts things in the recycling that shouldn't go in the recycling because it's easier to put it in the recycling than to put it in a trash bag.
It goes to the free pile.
Right, and so, you know, so that pizza box that isn't, shouldn't, is not, contaminates the cardboard. Um, maybe goes in the recycling, maybe goes in the recycling.
No confessions here.
Yeah, no. But, and, but I think that that's an, that can be an issue. So, and we talked about, like, I think having people pay for it gives some ownership to um making sure that it's not contaminated. Making sure that you're not just shoving in the, you know, oh, it's a, it's, oh, it's not really a compostable fork, you know, that I'm putting in the, in that bag.
Yeah.
So, and I'm sure that Mr. Fox, I, I'm sorry, I'm sure, or whatever agency does some quality control, just like the recycling, you know, they, they would kick it back if too many pizza boxes go in. Sorry.
Now, is it something, as far as what you're buying, is that something that you can buy from shop?
There we go.
What, what does the fox say? What does the fox say?
That was popular in my neighborhood. Okay, uh, any other committee reports? Moving on to uh, uh, Resolution twenty eighteen nineteen dash oh one. I'd uh, accept a motion to approve it. The title of the um resolution is Water Systems and Wastewater Pumping Station Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition, which is parentheses SCADA, System Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any uh, in presentation on that?
We, um, this project got approved by the town council several months ago. Um, it actually has started, electrical installations is finishing up building all the panels that go into the stations. What this does is has, brings an engineer in to actually check all the systems to make sure we get what we're supposed to be getting and make sure they operate properly. Um, and it also includes a, if we have a change order, which I think there could be a change order coming because um, at the Creighton Street, uh, panels don't kinda line up. So they're gonna take a panel from another station and move it into that one to uh finish off that prod, that piece. So what it is, is to handle ideally, the engineer to come in and check and make sure everything is okay. And if there's any other change orders that need to be, to finish the project.
Any questions? Please call a roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. You're welcome, thank you. Uh, next up, uh, Resolution twenty eighteen twenty nine, uh, excuse me, yeah, twenty eighteen twenty nineteen dash oh two, WiFi improvements uh to the town hall. I didn't accept an emotion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen twenty nineteen dash oh two.
Second.
Okay, um, I've been emailed by most of you, I think at least once about.
And me daily.
I've got WiFi issues in the building. And uh, emailed and notified by the town administrator on almost a daily basis about WiFi issues in the building. So I know we have an issue. Um, the equipment is quite old. I think we've gotten everything we can get out of the equipment. Put it out for bid, came back with three fairly competitive quotes. And I recommend we go with the one from RTM out of Merrimack. They came in and did a nice site survey. Um, recommended different channels for some of the uh, some of the wireless access points. Recommended ways to negate some of the interference from the schools wireless access points, as well as some of them that we get from Kent Place over there. We actually pick up some of those sometimes. Um, and that's it, I will entertain questions.
Saying interference of the schools.
They have wireless access points in the building as well. Yeah.
SAU?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I meant, the SAU.
Is this?
Go ahead, keep going if you have more.
With the Morakis, does this include the smart net?
The Moraki has a little thing you have to pay upfront. It's not smart net, but it's like a licensing fee. So it's not including the smart net.
Will there be a smart net charge?
There is not a smart net charge on these.
Five years?
Okay. Please call a roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And last, uh, Resolution twenty eighteen nineteen dash zero three, Purchase of Town Servers. I'd accept a motion to approve that resolution, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen twenty nineteen dash oh three.
Second.
Uh, this is another where we need to replace some sort of old equipment. Um, one of them will be the new server that we will use with the Munis software rollout. There's a portion of that software that will store all of our invoices. And that will get stored here locally. And it's a fair amount, we're kinda estimating how much storage it's gonna take. It's basically gonna take a lot. Um, and the current server that we have for accounting is six and a half years old. There's no way that thing could take this on as well as the new software that the town clerk needs. The second server would be for the police department. Um, the server we have over there is about six and a half years old as well. It's running uh two thousand and eight software. And we've been notified by the FBI that it will no longer be CGIS compliant in October. And if we lose CGIS compliant at the police station, it's a fairly big deal. I recommend that we went with the Gov Connection quote. It was actually the lowest quote that came in. And I'll take any questions.
Go ahead.
Um, so this says that they're both currently six and a half years old.
Yep.
What's the typical lifespan of a server?
As long as you can keep it running. Typically, I, I try not to go much beyond five. I think at five, you're, you're pushing a little bit. Especially these run twenty-four hours a day, they never really get a break. So I think we've, again, we've definitely gotten our money's worth out of them.
Thank you.
I agree with that. And just to throw in there, the Munis system is a much more robust system than our current financial software. Um, while it's web, more web-based and cloud, we're gonna be doing a lot more things with it than we currently use our financial software. So it's important to make sure we have a good system.
And can I, just to follow up on that, what's the status of the other two servers that we have? You said we have four, right?
We have one that's shared between Recreation and Fire right now. Um, and we have another one that's, that's being used by Assessing. And I have one other department on that, escapes me right now, but it's Assessing. And we're hoping to actually move Assessing to the web um in the next year, I believe, from what I'm hearing from our vendor. So there could be another server that we could get rid of and not need to replace.
And are the, are the other two also six and a half years old?
No, they're a little younger.
Okay.
They're both four.
Okay. Um, was there another option to use cloud storage instead of a server?
There is, but with cloud storage, the interesting part about cloud storage is generally it's, it's a little cheap for storage. It's a little expensive for transmission. So as we're uploading invoices, we get charged for that bandwidth every time it goes up. We get charged for that bandwidth every time it comes down. We get charged for every bit of cycle of usage, if you will, against those servers. Um, it's really not cost effective to do that when you're looking at the amount of years we wanna get out of these hardware boxes.
Please call a roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, nominations, I think that's up next. And we have a, I'd accept a motion to appoint Samuel H. Kenny to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire March twenty twenty-one.
I will make a motion to appoint Samuel Kenny to the Conservation Commission.
Any comments?
That's him.
Yeah, would you like to?
If you, if you had any questions, I figured I would be present.
Well, I appreciate that you're here and I appreciate your willingness to serve on the Conservation Committee. And you seem, your qualifications uh do recommend that it would be a real addition to the committee. So uh, I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but seeing no, no, and please call a roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, and now, Resolutions and ordinances in the first reading. Uh, let's see, where am I on this?
Oh, five.
Oh, five, go ahead and read oh five first.
Resolution two thousand eighteen nineteen oh five, Authorizing Town Administrator to Enter into an Agreement with the Lipoli Excavators LLC to Make ADA Accessible Improvements and Expand Use of Options for Community Center Gazebos. Whereas it's been determined that our, our community center gazebo does not allow for ADA accessibility and expanded use during inclement weather. And whereas the Director of Facilities requests proposals from contractors through RFP process with no respondents with the proposal being negotiated. And whereas the Community Center Gazebo is in need of ADA accessibility and use improvements. And whereas the Town Administrator recommends that the town enter an agreement with Lipoli Excavators of North Hampton to conduct services as detailed in our request proposal dated February thirteenth and revised April sixteenth, and then negotiated proposals. And now therefore let it be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town council authorized the Town Administrator enter an agreement with Lipoli Excavators LLC in North Hampton, New Hampshire to construct services as detailed in our request proposal in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars utilized in recreation impact fees.
Okay, Resolution twenty eighteen nineteen dash oh six, Dedicate, dedicate impact fees for the McIntosh and Tucker Wells Treatment Project and the Exeter Road Sewer Main Improvement Project. Whereas the Water and Sewer Department receives impact fees from developers. Whereas the impact fees must be used for or dedicated to expansion, expansion projects within six years from when the fees were received, or they must be returned to the developer. Whereas the McIntosh and Tucker Well Treatment Project will increase safe pumping capacity for the water treatment-related future growth and development. Whereas the Sewer Department has identified nineteen hundred feet of six inch gravity main that needs to be increased to twelve inch to meet the future flows coming from the golf course and Great Hill area. Now therefore be it resolved that by the Newmarket Town Council, that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby authorize twenty-seven thousand four hundred and three dollars and four cents water and a hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents sewer impact fees to be set aside for the McIntosh and Tucker Well Treatment Project and the Exeter Road Sewer Main Improvement Project respectively. And last, Resolution twenty eighteen nineteen dash oh seven, Total Nitrogen Control Plan. Whereas in May of twenty thirteen, the town entered into an administrative order by consent so that its total nitrogen permit limit would be an interim limit of eight milligrams per liter instead of the more stringent three milligram per liter limit. Whereas the administrative order by consent requires the town to complete and submit a total nitrogen control plan by September thirty twenty eighteen. Whereas the town has completed a total nitrogen control plan. Now therefore be it resolved that by the Newmarket Town Council, that the town, Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve and accept the total nitrogen control plan. And just as a point on that, is the total count, that, that, that plan was not attached to this packet?
It will be.
It will be on the next one. Don't wanna spoil the suspense, I take it.
House of the size.
So, uh, is there any uh correspondence to the town council?
There are none.
Are there any closing comments by town councillors?
Uh, I just wanted to add to the committee report. I forgot to mention, I had a note here, that the Stormwater Subcommittee is going to resume. You may see, um, if you look in the planners' uh report, you'll see some funding mentioned around that. Just to wrap that up with a bow.
Okay, are you gonna be on that Subcommittee?
I would like to, but I think there was some... I would like to, but I think there was some discussion at the last planning board meeting, like where we were with figuring out who was gonna be on the committee and the planners kind of sorting that out.
Okay.
So, I hope to be able to.
I think it would be great. Any other comments?
Mine's a little lengthy, Tony, would you like to?
Oh, that's okay, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I have two quick things. The first is, I do want to again highlight the fact that we had a large number of folks come out to this meeting tonight to draw attention to the changes that we'd made in town. And I know that we've stuck pretty firm with our decision here. And I guess one of the more common themes that kept showing up was just either maybe not being as transparent or as forthcoming with town activities. And I know that we do our best to publish everything that we're doing, to make people aware. For some folks, it might just slip through the cracks, but I would, I don't know, I just, I think that when we do make changes in town, especially ordinances, whether we see them as either just being small, minor issues, or, you know, maybe not necessarily as all encompassing as other folks may find them to be. I think it's just, it would help if we made sure that we do our due diligence as councilors to go forth and really talk to the people in the areas that might be affected. And I know that the Traffic Safety Committee, in their opinion, did really go and really try to flesh out this idea. And I have no fault towards them or other members of this council. I wish that, you know, as we got to here, that I had done more as well to just make sure that they were heard. But, you know, I read every email that came in, whether they were, you know, happy or mad, et cetera. I just want to thank the folks who came out here tonight, et cetera. And then the second thing I wanted to bring up, which is kind of an awkward one because it doesn't really concern the town of Newmarket, but the state of New Hampshire has seen an increased number of Border Patrol checkpoints that are popping up on our main corridors, more specifically I-93 in the Notch area, around exits 31 through 34, which are in some areas at least 100 miles away from the New Hampshire border with Canada, if not more, where folks are being detained for significant periods of time for no just cause other than this notion of protecting the border. They've already been declared by a New Hampshire judge, Thomas Rappa, that they're not legal, they are unconstitutional, they are violating the rights of citizens in New Hampshire. Not just New Hampshire constitutional rights, but as well as federal constitutional rights. And I just think it's important that we use our public positions to try to draw attention to this. I am flabbergasted that our governor is allowing this type of activity to occur for folks who in most cases are just trying to enjoy the scenic areas that we have in the White Mountains, that people just want to go and enjoy time with their families. The arrests that have been made are very slim in terms of immigration violations. They tend to be drug-related charges, small amounts of marijuana, victimless crimes, where nobody is necessarily, has had harm brought to them by the individual who was found carrying the paraphernalia. And I just, I kind of felt it necessary to bring it up here tonight. I see snippets of it in newspapers. And other than people trying to take hard-line stances on either side of the political aisle, I think it's important for us to be aware that this is occurring. That is all I have to say, thank you.
Anybody else have?
I just wanted to mention that at our last meeting, I had asked that we visit our, or revisit our goals as a council. So, I know I emailed Steve today, it was an oversight, it wasn't included in the packet, but just wanted to reiterate that I think it should be in our next.
It is on the next agenda.
On our next agenda, because I think it's important. We put in a lot of time and at this point, we're six months into the year, which is hard to believe, into our, into our year, which is hard to believe. So, that's all I have.
Ask, how do we typically follow up with those? Depends on the council. Okay. So, this is probably the more formal time than when we've ever had, so. All right.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think there's a pretty good understanding about what some of the goals are, which is why perhaps. But I think it is important, there were some things where it was a little looser. So, I think it is important to finalize. I looked in the minutes, and I didn't bring it up in the minutes. The minutes said, the minutes in July said, how come we didn't have it on the agenda? It was supposed to be an agenda in July and it will be on the agenda in August. And then, but this time I noticed in your administrative report, he says, this is gonna be, this is one of our goals. And we haven't finalized him yet, so I'm sure it's going to be on in the next meeting.
And one of the reasons also is that, you know, discussed with Counsel Weinstein, today, I think it would have, you need to focus on it. I don't think today would have been a great time, not knowing what the turnout was gonna be tonight, to try to focus on the goals with other projects in front of you.
If we're, so I have one other comment. And that's to remind people, and I know we have one more meeting before the election, but that the voting will take place at the elementary school, which is a change from what's typical because of the construction that's happening at the high school. I'm assuming that the construction will be, the elementary school will be in a place where we can vote there on the 11th. And you mentioned, Steve, that you'll send out.
Yep.
A schedule.
Yep.
Just because, and some of us, I imagine, will have other responsibilities, whether that's other political responsibilities or work for that day. So, I'll definitely be there at the end of the day to count and go from there as far as what else needs to be done.
And, Kyle, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I guess, reiterate what it said as far as the folks that were here this evening. Wishing that more people would come to the meetings that show interest in different topics and items that we're working on for the better of the community and town of Newmarket. Just highly stressed for folks to stay involved and keep their eyes on ball, I guess.
The only other thing, it's not really even fits under comments, but it just popped in. There was a correspondent between you and Counsel Cast about, is it the New Hampshire Municipal Association?
I was gonna bring up at the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay, just wanted to make sure that would happen.
I was gonna ask you about it.
Yeah.
Counsel Weinstein usually comments on these things, so I don't know if she was waiting for, to let someone else. But I think it's, I think it's really, I saw in the, the. Yeah, the drug-related, there was, during the month of July, we did not respond to any drug-related overdoses. That's notable, I wanted to just say that out loud.
Right.
And along those lines, the Newmarket ASAP group is sort of getting the band back together. Because while obviously just amazing strides have happened in Newmarket, we don't want to let that slip. So, Chief Tru just put that email out today, or yesterday, to just make sure that the group doesn't fade away. I had fallen away from it probably about a year ago, maybe, maybe more at this point because of just having too many commitments, but I'm gonna get involved again and see what we can do here in the community to make sure that that positive course continues.
Right, because if you follow the news, some communities, it's still getting worse.
Right, absolutely.
So, I appreciate all the work that ASAP's done. Is there any other comment? Seeing none, I think we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.